Okay, it is Thursday, May thirtieth. Welcome, everybody. Uh, let's see here. Okay, I guess we just discussed the Dubois.
This is a special meeting.
Wow. So, we're discussing the Dubois and King Engineering Proposal and Design Amendment to the San. And we're gonna decide on the next steps. The third thing is consider requests for listeners to extension of the grand list deadline. So.
And we're waiting for. The email.
Yeah, I just did some. I just wanted to know to compare what the costs are through the grant and what actual costs are today from quotes for things like walls and.
Building.
Building structures on top. So the walls that I'm looking at are the T walls. There's a company in Pennsylvania that um gave me a quote. They're made, they're brought here and they're put in place. And one quote is without an end wall. I know Eric, you wanted an end wall. One quote is, this isn't the emails not come through. Without the end wall was for a hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. But with an end wall. Was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-three. Yeah, one four eight, eight two three. I can never say numbers like that. Um, so these will have, um, they put in a special. What do you call it? Some sort of a powder that um. So they don't deteriorate with salt. It extends their lifespan as well. I can show you a picture of an example of one. That's, this building was huge, so don't get alarmed. And this one has um ends on it that we wouldn't do. On both sides. So the seventy-four by ninety was the quote that I got for a building. That building quote.
Oh, that's not the size of these things you just give us.
Those are just.
No, but um.
Wall.
Those are, these are the walls. These are just the walls. Yeah. And if you compare it to, I mean, I know the size is smaller from what we got for concrete being poured. From the grant, you know, I don't know if the grant would allow it to put out bid for these types of walls too. No, um, that would be a question I would have. Cause I, I feel like these. I think they're just, um, I've seen them in, in the pictures. I just gotta go to click.
So I think that's the kind of thing that you need to send to Stephanie to send.
Right.
Engineer.
Yeah. So we can do that. Um, here is um a picture of what they look like. Just.
No.
Pass it around. Oh, yeah.
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 Last time.
Has it in front of the owl? Um, but now I actually have specs on that too. So um. I just like that it's. Pretty streamlined. I mean.
Yeah.
Can you see it?
You gotta look over here to see if you can see.
Yeah, set it here.
So you move it around and she'll get to the camera on.
All right.
And Melody, you need to talk, so it'll look at you.
Oh, okay.
To talk.
I'm talking. Can you see it now?
No. It won't look at you.
Well, look at me, owl. Come on.
There you go. Now put it in front of your face.
Okay, can you see it now?
Now pull it back a little bit.
All right.
It's not so glary.
You see it now?
Sorta.
Sorta, all right.
So. Go bring it back. You had it tilted at an angle and I could see it. So try. Okay, now tilt it a little bit. Um.
Down up.
No, sideways.
Sideways.
There you go. Thank you. I got it.
Got it. Okay. So. So I think the idea was, um, when I talked to Eric, you want one open end, I'll open. So we won't have the doorway that you just saw in the picture and one, the other end would be solid. And it has the screen. Windows in the, in the back if we did that. And that estimate is. Oh, let me see. I gotta get to something else. I had it all, all like on paper enough at home. So. Specs, the design estimate. So this estimate is for. With the end, so the building, the installation and the freight comes to a hundred and ten, eight hundred and eight dollars. I mean, the trouble with these buildings is that we can send our idea if we um to Dubois. But this company, because it's out of Canada, even though the company that would erect it is in Vermont, won't, won't work. I don't know if Clearspan, did you know with Clearspan? I know that was one that Kathy had talked about early on. Is an approved company, cause they're all similar. There's Brightspan, Clearspan, Superstructure. And they're all about the same. But super, but Clearspans says they're Vermont, they're a. American company, cause they have headquarters in the States. And they have, and I looked up the particulars. And it says that some of their steel is American, some of their steel is Canadian, and all of the fabric is Canadian. So I don't know how they can say they're American.
So if we did our own building.
Right.
And we put it on waste block.
So to get permits.
The pavement.
To get permits. Um, it has to be engineer-approved walls. The waste blocks don't work. So we'd need a fire and safety permit and a stormwater permit. Is that, do you know that?
I don't know if we need the stormwater permit. I'm kinda thinking if we. Slightly say no to the state of Vermont, then we don't need to abide by the spec book, which is very restrictive.
Yeah.
And that would open up.
Spoil wondering if we.
And it should be a whole lot cheaper. Maybe not necessarily for us, because we wouldn't have that. But the overall cost should be a whole lot cheaper.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we have to do the stormwater, because we've disturbed more than an acre of impervious surface with the garage and upstairs. That's why we still have to do the stormwater permit. I mean, we started doing them both at once and then we gave up on those salt shed to do concentrate on the permit for the garage. But I'm pretty sure we still have to do a stormwater.
And so like I, I looked up the, the state um. Permits for that type of thing and there's different categories, but we still have to have an engineer like approve it all. That's where the money comes in again. So um. I don't know.
Right, cause we didn't finish that part.
Right.
On a creek.
Yeah. And that was like fifteen thousand dollars or something for the permit and the plant, something like that. Yeah.
For. Hey, what happens if we. Say no to it right now and wait a year or two at that point.
This is.
We'd be outside that stormwater permit and then we'd be disturbing less than an acre. I don't know if there's a timeframe on the surface disturbance.
I mean, this, even if we stayed with this. This still isn't gonna happen for two or three years.
Right. We don't get, and we don't get reimbursement for what eighteen months or something like that? What is the reimbursement?
We're getting reimbursed.
We are.
Relative.
Every quarter, I think.
Okay.
D and K sends a bill and the regional commission sends a bill.
Okay.
And then repay them and then Stephanie prepares something and you guys approve asking for reimbursement. So. You know, our, our total expenses with these two guys here is like twenty-seven thousand and we've gotten twenty-two back from the grant already. So these guys are reimbursing as we go.
And so we'd have to, if cop that money back up if um.
Right.
And that would come out of what we have available then.
That would, that would come back from what they reimbursed us. We would have to pay back what they reimbursed us.
So what, what would that, that makes us what? Have a hundred thousand dollars or some, maybe a hundred?
Right, right now, if you, if you took the two contracts to fruition, approve the other eight thousand dollars. It's just under a hundred thousand dollars that you're gonna spend. So of that hundred thousand, state's gonna pay.
Eighty.
Eighty percent. And that's supposed to give us, get us to this point where we can go out to bid for something between five hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But if we're talking a couple of years down the road.
Right.
I mean, I know it's a bit different than the bids I see, but they just keep going up. They are blowing past the engineers' estimates. So. That's a concern. Right. And so it's a little distressing that Stephanie says, well, look at the contract and it says, if you don't build it, you gotta reimburse everything. But then Scott Burley says, well, you know, it's on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, if we could make the case that. The price of everything went up so far, we can't actually afford it. And we might not have to pay back that eighty.
I'd like to find out where we're at right now. And I, I.
Meaning.
Money-wise, where are we at right now with? At what point are we at with how much we'd have to pay?
I just told you. We, we have spent twenty-seven thousand.
So we're.
Between DNK and Regional Planning Commission.
Right.
For what they've done to date and we've been reimbursed twenty-two. So if we stop right now, we would have to pay him back the twenty-two.
Or negotiate a way to, you know, try to get, try not to have to pay that back.
Right.
Right.
Scott was very wishy-washy about when, at what point you can decide. He thought you could go for quite a ways before you had to, and you, you wouldn't have to pay it back. But he did say it was case by case.
And so technically, we actually decided at the last meeting about this, that we would move forward, but then we never signed.
Right, you haven't signed it, because we had questions.
Right.
You haven't signed it.
And so we're not in trouble there that we've agreed to move forward, but.
No, we haven't signed it, but.
Okay.
But that's one of the things you really should figure out, but.
We still haven't gotten clear answers on stuff that we've asked.
Yeah.
Well, one way to look at it is if we go through with all this, we're supposed to be on the hook for only a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But the rest of it's gonna be paid for by the three hundred thousand dollar grant and theoretically, we're gonna get another two hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, but you don't.
Theoretically, we don't know.
We don't know that.
You don't know that at all. Those, those are just numbers of your.
But if we don't get that two hundred thousand, then at that point, you decide whether to go out to bid or sorry, to go to a bond or just can it.
But, and then at that point, we're on the hook for ninety grand.
For eighty grand.
As opposed to being on the phone up.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Cause if you think that inflation's gonna stop.
Excuse me, can one person talk at a time? There, you're talking over each other and I can't follow.
So one thing to consider is. If, do we really need a sand shed? I was looking at the grant that Kathy wrote to get this and her big pitch was we were gonna build a salt shed. So they didn't want the salt to get down into declared in river. That was part of her big pitch was. But so if we just switch this to a sand shed, I don't know what the state's take is gonna be on that.
I thought that we were gonna do sand and salt. Yeah.
But that's what we ultimately like, but.
I mean, I have talked to Ronnie and I know that he says it would be so nice to not be out there. When it break up the sand and the salt and stuff, so.
Well, not saying it's not.
So if you, if you really want one, then the way to go is follow this grant money, because it'll only cost a town a hundred and sixty-five. If we back out and we have to cover the, the bill for the whole thing, you know, the cost is four hundred thousand dollars, then you have a hundred and sixty-five set aside. How are you gonna build the building, the structure without?
Yeah.
Well, we wanted it.
No, you don't know that it's only gonna cost the town. No, there hasn't been a, a good price and you can't say that it's only going to cost the town X amount of money. Because in the next year, things are going to get exponentially expensive. And if we are at the point where it only costs us two hundred thousand, it may end up costing us three or four hundred thousand dollars. We don't know that.
Right, but we can, we can pull the plug. If it's gonna be more than what we have set aside, we've been assured we can pull the plug.
So I looked at a grant on Ward's borough's whole application process is online. And it was the fall of twenty-twenty-two and they ran into that where they thought they were gonna get more and they didn't. And so then they tried to, they tried to figure out a way to um. Raise, raise some of it um through taxes and some through.
Yes, that's what I don't want to do. I don't.
So I don't know, but for me, it's like, how do we? How do I make a, a good decision for the taxpayers and for the town and for the salt runoff and everything else, you know, to try to keep all those factors.
I hate to, I hate to ride this out to the point where we're on the hook for eighty grand. I mean, if we move forward and it doesn't exceed our hundred and sixty-five, awesome.
Yeah.
But if it does and we can't do it, we're on the hook for eighty grand. And that's sixty thousand dollars that we could have retained.
Yeah, cause I mean, the insurance hiked up this year. I assume it's gonna hike up again next year, just given how things are going. With the bird flu, you can expect your milk and meat byproducts to be going up, your, your eggs and chickens to be going up. I, I just don't see how the taxpayers can afford.
Oh, I don't, I. Preferably me, I want this to be little to no cost to the taxpayers at all.
Yeah, well, I mean.
I mean.
That's ideal, but I don't think that's reality.
So at the.
But if we. If we do it, if we do it on our own. And we don't, we don't have to do it all one time. We can do parts of it. We can level the land. We can do parts of it and. I mean, this was gonna be a two or three-year project anyway. So if it's two or three-year project on our own and we just do it.
And we can pay for it.
So can I chime in? Cause I was here at the beginning. And when Kathy applied for the grant, I asked her specifically this scenario. And she said, you know, if the, if the three hundred, if this three hundred thousand dollars doesn't cover it, then we're not going to do it. And we are at the point now where, you know, if the grant came in and it didn't cost the town a dime, you know, that's, that sounds good. That is not the scenario that we are facing right now. And we are, we, and you all acknowledge that it's, you do not expect it to be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's going to be more. And as a taxpayer, as someone who is watching daily, the cost of everything increase, including our taxes, which are going up, you know, it gets to the point where. You know, the, it, it may be nice not to have to bust off like frozen chunks of this and that. There's a lot of towns that do not have a covered sand shed. We have a covered salt shed that is a state-approved. It may not be ideal, but everything that we have is functional and legal. This is, to me, you know, this, this is the, this is the effect of poor planning from previous boards. And you guys are suffering the after effects of it.
So.
But, sorry, um, but you, you guys aren't beholden to the decision.
Right.
Previous board.
Well, I don't think that that's totally fair, because I think that a lot has happened since twenty nineteen that has changed the landscape for everybody.
Right, and this.
Out of control of anybody.
It's just gonna keep going.
But, but the scenario is, is, you know, do you just keep, you know, having the taxpayers, you know, this is, this is something that, you know, initially was not ever conceived of. This is a, it's the difference between a want and a need. You know, and you have a want from one or two people, the, the road crew. You know, it is a want, it is not, and there's a difference between a want and a need. You need to have a plow truck. You want to have your sand covered. There, there is a distinct difference and as a select board, you need to be, it, we, we don't. It, it is a want, not a need.
I still feel that we should, we have to put out a special meeting and ask the taxpayers, what do they want?
So that's an interesting point, because when this all came, when this first happened, the select board went to the town. And they said, we wanna bond and we wanna do these two projects and it's not going to cost anymore. And that was not, that was not the case. And that was, those were choices by the previous select boards to make a building that cost more, instead of making it smaller or making accommodations for two buildings. They chose to do one. And so now that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, closer to a million, when you factor all of the things in, that is paid for. But now, we are now looking at another building that the, the shallow end is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and by the end of the summer, it could very well conceivably be a million. And that is, you know, and, and it might be that, yeah, we can get grants for this and we can get grants for that, but we may, we may not. And it goes back from a taxpayer's perspective, you know, this town has spent a tremendous amount of money on infrastructure and equipment. And if we're just, we're, we're only six hundred people, you know, we're six hundred residents. We only have, you can only rain the snow so much before, it's like, when do we stop?
That's why I'm saying we do it on our own. We can do it in sections. If we retain, if we don't go out to the, where we're spending eighty grand and we cut it now. It's at twenty-two grand. And we, we keep the bulk of it. And we can add to it and we section, we do sections of it. We don't have to do it all at once. We can do sections of it.
Well, I think we need a really good estimate before you can make that determination. Um, Eric asked me today how much the, we had budgeted for floor, the paved floor. And I said fifty and you said thirty. Turns out it was forty. I found Stan's paperwork though, you know? So that's a couple of years ago. So, you know, you would figure out what the, the floor is gonna cost and what the walls are gonna cost and we would need a really good estimate.
But that was for a bigger footprint.
Right, right.
Great. Yeah.
Um, I mean, my thought is if we're gonna. I don't think we're ever gonna do it piece by piece ourselves, honestly, because we're, we're bucking at one thousand dollars right now. You know what I mean? Now you're gonna be, the taxpayers, without any grants, you know, would be on the hook for a hundred and ten thousand dollar building and then stormwater permits and then asphalt underneath it and, you know, so without the grants. Right, without the grants, I don't, we're not, it's not gonna happen. Ever. You know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to say. You're not, we're not gonna ever have the money to go to do it.
Also like crowdfunder, do something creative like that.
It's never gonna be there, you know, you can say.
We can, we also cannot get to, we also cannot get to the point where. We're at the end of it, we're going out to bid and we're gonna be on the hook for another couple hundred thousand dollars.
I agree.
Uh, that, I, I. No, that's not.
For nothing, you're, what you're saying, you know, we go out to bid, now it's too big. Now we spent a hundred thousand to get nothing.
Yeah.
This budget.
Yes, we're, it's a. Yeah.
There, there is a need for it. That we cannot keep enough salt down there in that little shed we got. There's definitely a need for some, for some salt. The other thing I was thinking if you did. Half of the sand inside. Um, you could go a little smaller. If you need to, you could move one in later on. Um, but that would get you a good start. And if you can get some more salt, just, I mean, doesn't have to be all of it. Be nice if it was, but if you got some more storage, because you run out and there's a big ice storm down south, that's where it goes. You don't get it.
How many times did we run out?
Well, I ran out a whole bunch of times.
These run out.
And how long did it take to get salt? Couple weeks sometimes.
And that's not good.
Yeah, they don't care about us.
Because we're a town of center people.
They don't care about us. They really don't. They'll deliver, they'll deliver four hundred down, four hundred tons to the state garage um by the airport and I can't get twenty.
Here we didn't, did you run out?
No, no.
Um.
Two years, three years ago I did.
And how long did it take to get salt?
Week. Before I got one load.
But we actually ended up moving to the state to get it.
No, they wouldn't give me any.
I thought you went.
I wouldn't ask.
They all, though they wouldn't know.
They used to. They did, they did me a few times, but they said we keep doing, even though I brought back.
So what about?
Give it.
So what about scaling the building back and doing a smaller one? And doing part of the sand?
Well, that, the one that she did is much smaller.
It's higher though, so.
Higher.
Yeah. And you can, you can actually get the salt shock in there.
It's a lot smaller than what I set up in the first.
How, how the hell did Ira do theirs for two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, it's smaller and it's got the waste blocks and they use their RPA money.
We have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Why can't we do that? Why can't we do a smaller building and waste block?
I don't know how they didn't, they must not have done us a water permit, you know? It's the permits take, and I don't know if fire safety has to, we get a permit from them to.
Fire safety and they're the ones that said we had to have engineered block.
Maybe somebody should call Ira.
Yeah.
I talked to Karen and Ira and how they, you know, did it and they, there's a coating that you put on, there's some sort of.
On the, on the waste block?
There's a sealant that you have to put on the waste block, yeah. And, um, yeah, but you, you won't go as high with them, that's all.
What are you talking about? Are you talking about a salt shed or a sand shed?
Oh.
So.
Or putting part, putting part sand in it and part salt in it. I don't, I don't know. I just. There is, there's, there's gotta be something that we can do for the money we have.
There's this open end, it's open on either side. I don't know if they can access it from both ends, maybe. So. Yeah.
Melody, what was the cost of that building? A hundred and eight thousand?
Hundred and ten.
And.
That was.
A hundred and eleven.
That was the structure.
Yeah, that was part of it.
Yeah.
The walls were part of it and then you still got.
Yeah, so I just added up what, an estimate of um what the walls and the the building and maybe I said twenty-five thousand dollars for the asphalt and that came to two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. And that's, there's gonna be more carpet. On top of that, you've gotta get your.
Does that, does, do we have to do an asphalt base?
You shouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's gonna, that's a drop in the bucket. On that, but wait.
I know, I'm just trying to.
It's half.
So we did waste block.
All right, so then I have to take.
Then we coated it. And we'll find out what, did we coat it? I mean, just.
It was the coating fire retardant or salt? Salt, so it's, yeah.
So it's probably a siling.
Corrosive, yeah. And you know, the, the thing with that is, cause when I was talking to the, the concrete guy, wall guy, he said, you know, yeah, you can coat them and everything, but every time there's a neck or a ding or something like that, it's gotta get resealed and who does that, he said, you know, so anyway.
I mean, I have a, what if five gallon container of siling costs, but we do it on the bridges.
Yeah.
What's the life expectancy of the buildings?
Well.
No, I've had mine for twenty-four years.
Their tarp is twenty-five years, I think, and the flame is fifty.
I had mine for twenty-four years.
The frame will last longer. Um, our building, we redid after twenty years because we had a terrible storm that ripped the roof. But um.
The mine's small.
But insurance paid for part of it, so that was helpful. But I think that. Yeah, I think what I like about the fabric buildings is there's natural light and there's um. They can be re-roofed in.
It will.
No time, you can re-roof your building.
And it will warm that sand up.
Yeah, it will.
Been, been, been there.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I don't know, we're not getting it.
No, I know, I, I.
So.
I'd rather be on the hook for twenty-two grand than be on the hook for eighty grand.
Cause I don't see it costing us six hundred thousand dollars. I see it costing us way more than that. Or costing total through, through the grand. What are the extra costs that the grants is making us pay? What are the extra costs that the grants is making us pay? I think there's. Inspections or something.
Yeah, there's inspection. I forget how much she had for that, but I thought it might potentially be a little low.
Oh, I thought it was too high, I thought you, you said it was like fifty thousand or something.
Well, it depends on how much, cause if their inspector. Is. On site. Taking measurements, doing inspections, taking samples, it, yeah, I mean, it might be. It might be too low, but if they're just popping in once in a while to see that it looks coherent, then yeah, probably is a bit on the higher side. But when you're following state spec and now you're. I'm assuming, cause that's what they said, is that was gonna be the spec book, and I don't know if this is two thousand eighteen or the two thousand twenty-fourth, twenty-four is double in size. But now you're talking rebar samples and. Getting, um, certifications for geotextile under, uh, under, um, roadbed separator and, you know, all this other stuff. Which is gonna take somebody time and, and effort. Where we don't follow the grant. We can go. Geotextile.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I have a roll in my barn right now. Well, I think we gotta figure out what we can do, because we are on the state's radar for stormwater and.
Yeah.
Public buildings, so.
Um, maybe that would be our question that we need answered before we can fully make a decision is.
Right, what?
You know, if we don't go with the grant. Does the stormwater permit, is that still applicable and what are, what are the restrictions with it?
I can find that out, but I think it has to do with the total impervious area that got disturbed. And I don't know if that's a five-year timeframe, I can try to find that out.
Yeah, cause I mean, part of what was disturbed is got vegetation on it, so. But, but it's gonna get disturbed again, yes.
Right, but if it takes two to three years, you know, and. Like Kevin said, you do one aspect of it and then you do another aspect of it and. You start building that into the taxes slowly. And it's not a bigger building. You know, I keep pushing that you put more salt in the, get rid of all of that stupid recycling crap. And use the other rest of that building for more salt storage. That's not perfect, but it is a stopgap that gives you more salt capacity.
You have to do a lot to that, no one they're trying to do anything just. It wouldn't work good at all.
How, how do you actually put salt in the building?
The back part has got a higher roof. So it's one, half the building is taller and it's the full length and it's got asphalt in the floor. The roof is lower than the front.
Yeah, and it gets dumped and push it in the, something or other.
And that whole building is. Got a lead to it.
Yeah, but it's, they're telephone poles, I mean, you can, you can, you can make something happen and make, and make cheap salt storage. And because it's already there. It's.
Is that wouldn't, with recycling, so it wouldn't work good at all, for sure.
No, you get rid of the recycling stuff.
I'm just saying, the shape of the building wouldn't work.
Yeah, but it would probably, you know, you could at least take a look at it because it's a, it's the structure that is there and it may not be ideal, but it is.
If we looked at, um. If we, if we looked at. So what do we gotta do? Look at a s- a smaller building. That'll do.
Right, that's what D and K is supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
Is looking at a smaller building to come up with. Something that we can afford. That's what you're paying them another. Eight thousand dollars, actually, we would be paying two thousand, the state would be paying six. We'll be coming out with a grant. To, to come up with something that we can afford. As opposed to, I think it. One of the meetings, it, there was discussed that most times you have a project. And you. Design it for what the need is. In this case, they're designing it for how much money we have. That hopefully will still meet the need, so.
Well, we figured out with this footprint, you have, you wanted two hundred cubic, what is it, yard?
Two thousand.
Two, yeah, two thousand, that's on that. And you, we figured this one has twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, you're there, if you get. That height.
Right.
You're there. My vote would be take one more step with these guys, pay them their eight grand and see what they come up with.
And give them some. Specific ideas.
Right.
Yeah.
Which they already had.
Yeah, I know.
But they didn't, that's it, they didn't use it.
So you're gonna, you're just gonna give them more money and they're gonna do something that's not right and then you're gonna have to give them more. I'd say.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna give them two grand. So, but, but even still, we're gonna give them two grand to redesign something that they should have done in the beginning.
Well, I think now we have, we do have more specific. Ideas that we can.
He told exactly this, right from the get-go.
Well, I'm.
No, I know, but I'm just.
You know, I mean. What our money gets spent. And there's lots of layers to how it gets spent, it's very frustrating.
I'm very, I am very, very, very leery of going past the point of where we owe twenty-two grand.
Well, let's answer, get some questions answered that we need from Stephanie. And, um.
I, I mean, that's fine, we can do that, but I just. I'm really, I'm scared that we're gonna get to the point where we spend eighty grand. And we're gonna lose eighty grand.
After they bring us back. You know, when they spend the eight grand that they're gonna spend, where do you go to? Point to make a decision.
But are we gonna be over that twenty-two thousand threshold?
We'll be at twenty-four thousand at that point.
And it, hopefully, they will come back with something that's, you know, what you like, if you like it, then you say.
So, they come back with something that we like. That's awesome.
Goes out to.
And it goes out to bid. And.
Cause it took them in very easily as one point two million dollars.
For a fabric building.
Yeah, I mean.
How can you justify that to the?
I, no.
Well, you wouldn't.
No, absolutely not.
But that's. That's not our. What we're paying for it.
It's not, but, uh, but if that grant doesn't come through. If that two hundred thousand dollar grant doesn't come in for us, then we are on the hook for that, admit, for that. Or we lose eighty grand.
Or if you get a three hundred thousand dollar grant and a two hundred thousand dollar grant and it's a one point two million dollar building. You're putting it on the taxpayers, because you have to, and now you have to go bond again.
I, I, from what we gathered from Scott Gurley is. When towns were in that position. They didn't have to pay back the grant. They decided not to go forward, they ended up not paying back the grant. But it's on a case by case basis, but.
Is that in writing somewhere? You know?
Right.
That's, you know.
Well, that's, that's, that's why they say it's on a case by case basis, you have to make the pitch, but. We do need to make sure that. There is salt in the building, otherwise they're gonna look at our grant and say. Our grant application and say, you're not. Right, you're covering up your sand, you're not doing anything to address. The salt being pushed in, the salt coming out and being dribbled on the ground, I mean, that's, that was Kathy's pitch, so. And I'd forgotten that, I just happened to come across the grant application today while I was looking for other information about this stuff.
Yeah.
So specifically, what do you wanna know from Stephanie or from? Anybody else that I can?
If we decide that we're gonna do this on our own. And we step a, step away from this. What? Are we still gonna need to do the stormwater?
Yes, I'm pretty positive you are, but I will, I will verify that.
And what is, what is the ballpark of that cost?
Well, I'm gonna have to hire an engineer.
Right.
Fifteen or twenty thousand anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it is built into this grant here, but.
Yeah, it was fifteen, I think, for this one, yeah. Well, maybe we just stop at the site plan, if that's all the stormwater needs, or if it's. Site plan and some environmental.
Let them do the site plan, stop.
Do the site plan and, and the EPSC, um, erosion prevention sediment control plan and. We done with it.
That's a question.
I wonder at that point what we'll be on the hook for.
I, I mean, it'd probably be a bit more than the twenty-two K, but it would probably be a whole lot better than the eighty K, I would hope. Yeah.
So are you suggesting? A separate engineering firm or D and K do this to a certain point?
Yeah, I mean, I.
D and K doing this to a certain point.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, if for the stormwater, we need erosion prevention sediment control plan. Hopefully, D and K is doing that already, but. What, and what did we get, I mean, I have the. The one that has the, the map and all that and all those things, you know, and their erosion control and all those things, I mean, isn't that already partly done?
Partly done, but you gotta get the state has to approve everything with the engineers, saying you're gonna do this and this and this. What's frustrating for me is. The stormwater permit for the town garage just dealt with the. Garage's stormwater, it didn't deal with stormwater on whole picture. And I think the stormwater plan for the salt shed was just gonna deal with. The stormwater that comes off that building, it doesn't deal with all the water that runs down the driveway and.
I thought it dealt with the whole thing, I thought that's why you put that retention thing at the way out.
Well, he just did that to try to keep stuff from running through. Alright.
Don't get me started.
Well. How, how do we? Feel about that? Will we have answers for our regular meeting?
Answers by the thirteenth, you get the questions and I will get the answers.
Yeah, I am. I am okay with that, we'll get the answers from this and then if we can. See what these answers are, let this. Play out to where they do. The inspections. And then maybe. At that point and.
Yeah, we see if it's. Feasible, I guess.
Yes.
And then we won't have all that, um.
Cost. I mean, uh, paying them back at that point would probably be cheaper. Than what it would cost us to hire an individual firm to do it on our own.
I'm thinking if we have a site plan for the size building, it's seventy-four by ninety or, or whatever, and we have. The environmental, then hopefully it's. You know, alls we need to do is then purchase the building. Yeah.
So. And then can we find out what waste block for that seventy-four by ninety building would be?
We can use.
Even if we spray them?
They gotta be engineered. You gotta be engineered block. They won't want to use waste blocks. I know that for a fact, I've been backwards forwards.
But if we do it on our own?
They, yeah, you still need a fire safety. You still need to fire safety permit and meltdown, and them, those are the guys that are driving the bus, and I don't know how. I don't know how Ira got away with it. Because.
She probably didn't ask. They probably just did it, yeah.
I can get a price on waste block, but I guarantee they're gonna.
Oh, I have a price on waste blocks.
Is that, but if, but that fire retardant spray is that?
It's not a fire, it's not, it's not, it's a structural thing.
It, it, silane is just waterproofing basically, so the salt doesn't eat the block as fast.
The waste blocks are, they'll have cold joints in them. Where they come back, so a truck comes back and they'll fill it half full. And the next truck will come back and he'll fill it the rest of the way, so there's cold joint in the middle, so they can separate. So the, the engineered blocks, they specially mix it.
So don't cooperate.
One at a time, and that's why somebody else bought that concrete and waste blocks. But you're buying it in a engineered block.
So the, the bin, the bin blocks are two by two by six and they're eighty-five dollars each, I called Tara this morning.
They were fifty-five.
That's for the three footers.
Oh, they, no, the six by, the, the six foot ones used to be fifty-five.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, three footers are not fifty-five.
That's how much they've gone up, yeah, so.
And the waste blocks are. Some of them are really good and some of them are really junky, because they are just waste, you could have, you know.
Yeah, and the guy that I talked to with the walls. Sorry. Yeah, well, when I was talking to the, um. Keystone. Concrete guy, he said that. Yeah, those bin blocks are, are junk, he said, for this application. Um, I obviously want to, to do a job, but still, I. Feel like that's probably the case. You know, it's just gonna be so variable, you know, so.
So are you deciding you want them to do the other eight thousand dollars worth of stuff, or do you want more? Questions answered?
I prefer to have at least have the stormwater permit. Question answered before.
Yes.
Proceed with. Yeah, great. Additional eight thousand. Alright, so I. Reduced my calculation, cause you said it was probably maybe twenty thousand for the footprint, maybe for the asphalt.
Yeah.
So that's two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
So you're gonna put gravel under the?
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be more cost to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so we need, we need to have our eyes open, how many other extra things gonna get there?
I mean, I figured it'd probably be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollar building if we did it, that's what I'm thinking. But, you know. We have what, a hundred and?
So if we do it, that's three hundred and fifty thousand of the.
Probably.
Taxpayers.
Well. Yeah, well, we've got some money in the.
We have some savings, but that is taxed.
Right.
Tax paid dollars that we have saved.
So again, it goes back to, when you justify paying three, taking taxpayers' money, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our money. And putting it towards, you know.
Well, we don't know the answer to that unless we ask the taxpayers, that's what I feel like, yeah.
Agree, I think you should ask the taxpayers, I think that that is, whenever you're dealing with money of this magnitude, and that didn't happen when this initial grant happened and. It proceeded and, you know, very few people even knew about it.
Right, and so that, yeah, once we get the answer from that, then we can decide, do we have a special meeting and, you know, all of that.
Well, we also need. Fire and safety and, I'll see if there's any other permits that are required, but. It is a public building, so, I mean, I. I don't know why I ever did it. I don't.
How public of a public building is it though? I mean, it's just for the room, right?
It was, it was less than the specified impervious surface of the, i- if it was, if it. You can do, you could do anything you wanted to under a certain size. And we wouldn't be in this situation if we hadn't made the town garage as big as we had. Because we could have made it smaller and gotten everything under. We would have been grant filed in, in the envelope, but the, that building is too, is as big as it is. Triggered us into another stormwater from the state. So Ira got away with it because they just put it wherever they put it and there was nothing else there. There's no other, there, there's, there is, they didn't have. They were below the requirements that triggers the state, and that's why Ira was able to do waste blocks and do everything that they did, because. They made it small enough that they didn't have to go to this next level. That's probably the logical explanation for it.
Probably, yeah. Well.
So I will.
Yeah.
Figure out what I can figure out here.
Okay. Right, what's happening? So we figured, we've done the first agenda item.
I think we've decided, hey, we're all decided on next step.
Yes. Yep, uh, consider requests for listers for an extension for. Brandless deadline.
Deadlines. Are, we're supposed to have it filed by Tuesday and I fully anticipate that we're gonna have it done by then, but just in case we don't. Are, we're supposed to have it filed by Tuesday and I fully anticipate that we're gonna have it done by then, but just in case we don't, we have had a couple of problems with the software. From one is the taxi department and one is a private company and just to cover our bets. The listeners hopefully request an extension of thirty days to meet the deadlines.
I make a motion to extend the deadline.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
You're moving to request extending the deadlines, the, the director of property valuation review actually decides.
Okay, so we're moving to request the extension of deadline.
You're seconding again?
Yeah.
We're all in favor again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just for your information, we do not get the paving grant this year, we got notification a couple of days ago.
Okay.
So we'll be paving ones.
And that's what's gonna happen with the building.
We'll try to come up with some. Realistic figures that you can look at for what it's gonna cost to do it and.
Right.
If you're, you've got a Canadian company and the American company is gonna charge twice as much that. Could. But if it's not grant money, then.
Right.
We don't have to do that.
Right.
Well, I just quickly looked it up and found one for ninety five thousand two hundred dollars. So it's gotta be.
It's in the ballpark.
I was actually surprised, uh, the T walls, I thought they were gonna be a lot more than they were. For the actual T walls and bringing them here and setting them, yeah.
I was thinking that maybe worth a call to Carreras too, because they have a precast plant in Middlebury.
Yep, they do.
They might precast those there and the cost might be lower.
Okay, I didn't think that Carrera made them, so.
Yeah, they have a precast plant in Middlebury, they bake bridge beams and stuff.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they make those or not, but they, it's a really cool setup.
Yeah, who bought out Daley's down south? I don't know if they would make them too, I think they're mostly precast now, or at least they won't deliver concrete for the state. Yeah.
I didn't know Daley's had one, but I've seen, I've seen the one in Middlebury.
Yeah, I looked on their site and I didn't see anything like these walls, but we can definitely get a thing home, yeah.
I'm gonna try to look at the first proposal we got for nine hundred and ninety five thousand, because in there, I remember the. Structure itself was a hundred and ninety five thousand, so what makes that up that other eight hundred thousand is what I need to try to figure out.
I think size though, wasn't it size, was there, was the size bigger?
Size, but they also had cement at two hundred and fifty dollars a yard and other things like that, so.
Yeah, it was like.
You know, if the structure was a hundred and ninety five, what was it other eight hundred thousand?
Another thing right now is that the state of Vermont. It's struggling with some of the concrete suppliers because the state of Vermont is not their primary customer. And they don't necessarily wanna do the mixed designs in the spec book, so. That, you know, that is another legitimate concern of how much are we gonna pay per yard of concrete to get a state spec, right?
And that's true on our own or.
No, no, you wouldn't need a state spec.
Yeah, I, I don't think you would.
You're just making calls and.
Just like, hey, we.
Air and trained, blah, blah, blah.
Three thousand or yeah, whatever. Ricks a wig.
Bear, it was a bear.
Shut her down.
Um, so yeah, I think we just need to do some homework and, and really dig into what we can do, where we can cut costs and see what we can do on our own. But we'll get the answers to our questions. Possibly let them ride out to do the inspections and. That would be my choice.
Seven fifty six.
Meeting adjourned.